This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
We are going to call to order our regular session of the East Hampton School Committee tonight. We are going to begin with a roll call in, which we're going to start doing now, so that I don't have to remember if we have to or not. Ben Hershey.
Ben Hershey here.
Eric Kaye.
Here.
Megan Hershey?
Like, Hershey?
Here.
And Harvey here.
That happens at this time.
It really does. That's the first time. And Demarkey, here. And Laura Scott present. Mayor LaChapelle and Sam Hunter are not with us tonight, but we are joined by our illustrious Superintendent Maureen Beneta, whose birthday it is today.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is being recorded, and also there is the option to join remotely through Google Meets. We will be able to entertain any members of the public during public speak in just a minute, either remotely or in person. We are going to begin with announcements and correspondence.
I do not have any correspondence to report. I'm just going to confirm that again, that I don't have anything to report, and I really don't. Okay, so I have no correspondence to report, so I'm moving on to gifts. And we have two gifts to discuss today. We have a generous donation from Stephen, Melissa Brody, and Ava Richardson for the donation of a drum for the band students at Mountain View School. And so I would like to make a motion that we approve the generous donation from Stephen, Melissa Brody, and Ava Richardson for the donation of the drum.
Can we get a second?
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes?
We also have in front of us today a generous and amazingly long list of donations from community members for We the People in support of their trip to Washington DC. We are very proud of We the People, and very apparently so is the community. And so I make a motion to approve the generous list of donations for We the People for their trip to Washington DC per the attached, and in a minute you will see all of the generous donations.
Can we get a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? To be clear to the public, there were dozens of donations, so we are not going to list them individually, and they continue to come in, and we're so very grateful for supporting the students on their way to Nationals. Next up, we're going to begin with our Mountain View School student representative, Piper Boral, who's joining us live in person tonight. Hi, Piper.
Hi. I'm going to talk to you about what we're doing in class. And in science, we're doing DNA. In math, we're doing scatter plots. In civics, we are doing projects on the Constitutional Convention. And in ELA, we're doing argumentative essays, but we just stopped that unit, and we're going on to a new unit about the Holocaust and World War II. And in art, we're doing an Andy Warhol painting. In music, we're making our own music as, like, news reporters. In gym, we're doing volleyball, kickball, or dodgeball. I haven't been there the past few weeks, so I don't really know what we're doing. In STEAM, we're building tiny houses. And in health, we're learning about safety.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And then there's this eighth grade reading buddies, where specific eighth grade students are working with elementary students, which are third through fifth graders, to help them catch up on their work or just like anything that they really need help with. And then our Constitutional Convention project. Each eighth grade in civics class was assigned a delegate, which is a person at the Constitutional Convention, and they had to do a Google slide presentation on them about like their backstory, life, and role at the convention, and just any other information about them.
Piper, really quickly, who'd you pick?
I didn't get to pick, but I got assigned one, and I got John Dickinson.
Nice. Okay. We'll talk later.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you so much. And just so the public is aware, Piper prepares all those slides and all of that information as well. Really stellar. Outstanding.
Thank you.
We also have a report from Mackenzie McCarthy from East Hampton High School. Is Mackenzie able to join us? There she is. I didn't even see you. Also live and in person. Mackenzie, can I ask, sweatshirt?
Um, I haven't committed, but I probably will be going to Villanova.
Wow. Congratulations.
Thank you.
See? All right, go ahead.
Last week, members of East Hampton Student Council, along with high schools from around the state, attended a three-day annual state conference and spent time attending workshops, listening to presenters, and voting on students from across the state on the state, who would serve on the state executive board as president, vice president, and secretary. McKenna Slate, Maura Larson, and I all presented workshops focusing on the importance of communication and strategy for improving communication within the student council setting. During the conference, the East Hampton Student Council was awarded the Five Star Council Award for Continued Support and Engagement in the State and Regional Activities and the Gold Council of Excellence Award for Demonstrating Excellence Within This High School Community. In addition to the whole council awards, Rosemary Marks, Walter Baker, and Amela Richmond Kane were recipients of the Commonwealth Award for their work and commitment to student leadership. Additionally, Ayana Cooper-Bias received an honorable mention as a nominee for the Western Massachusetts Unsung Hero Award, which is presented for going above and beyond as a leader, encouraging peers to do their best, and receiving little regular recognition for their work. Additionally, today, students picked their classes, if you're in ninth, 10th, or 11th grade, and seniors had a meeting for what's going to go on in June for graduation.
Thank you so much. Congratulations again. Villanova, anyone would be lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right. We are going to move on to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience, we could ask if you want to step up to the podium, if anyone here has anything to say. Otherwise, we could look for raised hands via Google Meet. We'll give that a couple minutes just to see if he's interested in contributing. No? Okay. Do we have, was that a hand? We do have one. Okay, so we'll just remind folks to try to keep it to
I think it was the East Hampton media that went on.
Three minutes? Oh, the East Hampton media. We do not have one.
Yeah.
And we're not going to take public comment from East Hampton media. No offense. You're welcome to. Yeah? I don't see anybody. Give it just a second. And then the next would be our superintendent updates. We're going to close public comment and move to that.
Good evening, everyone. This is the time of year when we have to talk about the Student Opportunity Act. It's a three-year grant that we get from the state, and we're going to have Julianne Levin explain it to all of you tonight. It has to get a vote of the school committee in order to go forward, and it is due April 1st, so to the state. Julianne was instrumental in also meeting with all the stakeholders to have them review the school leaders, as well as the school councils, to really look at what are the needs that we feel we want to have supported by the Student Opportunity Act. And I hope you enjoy this really informative presentation tonight by Julianne.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. So in my role in curriculum and grants, can I just say really quickly, Mackenzie McCarthy, she just told you about the student council trip they all went on last year. She did not mention that she wrote the grant application for ELF to get funding for that trip.
So, wow.
They went just last week.
Just last week.
At the ASC Conference, yes. Yep. They went just last week, and it was partially funded by ELF because she wrote an application. She was like, "I'm going to get money to do this," so.
Nice.
Impressive, impressive student. All right. This is our overview of the new three-year cycle of Student Opportunity Act plans. We say new three-year cycle because, you may not know, we just ended a three-year cycle, which I'll talk a little bit about. The overarching goal... Why is it not moving forward on there?
I thought we got off a little too stop-free with
Yeah, right.
Very smoothly. Is it advancing on your computer?
Uh-huh. There it goes. It was just slow.
Okay. I just needed more time.
Okay. All right. I can do that. Okay. So the overarching goal of the Student Opportunity Act through legislation was to ensure that every student in the Commonwealth has access to equitable, high-quality education regardless of zip code. So what happened was there were a number of, I think primarily urban superintendents, that went to DUCY and said, "Your funding formula for Chapter 70 reimbursement is not equitable for large districts, for urban districts." And so they sought to correct that. So it's a little different than a grant, because it's actually part of the Chapter 70 reimbursement, but it's an increase to the Chapter 70 reimbursement based on the changes in the funding formula. And if you have questions about that, please don't ask me. Ask Mr. Bernier. Okay. I can do the plan part. The fiscal part is for him. So the SOA has two components, both the fiscal changes and then the policy update part, which is the plan. Just to give you the background on the funding, this has been our change in funding for Chapter 70 reimbursement over the years of the SOA plan being in place. So over, what was that, four fiscal years, the total increase in our Chapter 70 funding was $682,000... Eighty-two, $180,000, sorry, dollars. Wow. $682,180. There it is. Which is not actually a large increase over time, and it's subject to both inflation and our enrollment, specifically our low-income student subgroup. The last three-year SOA plan went from January 2021 to April 2023. That's not three years. You're right. It's not. That particular submission cycle was modified due to COVID, so it's a much shorter plan cycle. Now we're into the real plan cycle, which is the full three years. We will be submitting the SOA plan in April, and it will take us through to April of 2027. This is different from our improvement plans. So we have the district improvement plan, which for us is the year-to-year plan based on our overall three-year strategic plan. That's our big umbrella plan. And then, as you know, the schools have their next level down improvement plans. The SOA plan goes deeper into disproportionality of students and asks you to really focus in on subgroups where you are seeing disproportionality in the data at the highest levels. I'm going to show you what that means. So keeping in mind, these are the plan elements. What's our plan? Analyze our data. Set ambitious three-year targets. Engage families, caregivers, and other stakeholders, which is ongoing through this month. I just want to say there's... Because I haven't met with the EHS School Council yet, so we're still doing that. So the stakeholder involvement continues through the month of March until April, when we submit it to DUCY. And then specifically selecting these evidence-based programs and strategies to address the disparities in the data. There are a lot of resources out there. If you're interested more in the Student Opportunity Act, I highly recommend just that first website. It has the links to everything else. The Student Outcomes Comparison Tool is what I'm going to show you next, because that's how we find the disproportional data. And then the rest of the things on there are all just resources you can find on that website that might help you understand more about what the parameters of this program are. So this is what the Student Outcomes Comparison Tool looks like. And what it does is, it's not... So usually when we're looking at data, we're just looking at the aggregate, right? So this disaggregates our data, and then it shows us where the greatest disparities are between certain student subgroups and the all-students group.
That the cherry red is the highest disparity?
Disparity. Yeah. This is not our data. Sorry, this is just a sample slide here. But we do have this for our data, and if you go to that SOA website, then it'll link to this, and it's all public information. So you can go and look at East Hampton all you want. So when we're looking for these... What we're looking for is the places where the greatest disparities lie, right? But we're also looking for places where the SOA program categories have evidence-based practices that we can put in place to address the disparity. So for that, here are some more resources that we use. The Coherence Guidebook puts together our MTSS work and our equity work. This is also a great protocol, analyzing data for root cause. We've used it a number of times in the district over the years, and it really gets you down to, like, what is going on with this particular subgroup, and what can we do to make it better for those kids? This is the evidence-based program aligned to the strategic objectives for DUCY, which are a whole lot of words that, again, like, I'm happy to go into this, but basically, DUCY does a strategic plan, just like we as a district do a district plan... I'm sorry, a strategic plan. And these are the objectives from DUCY's strategic plan. So they want us to be looking at their strategic objectives to define how we are doing the work around improving outcomes for students. What they then did was take those strategic objectives and map them to evidence-based programs. So how do we know what works to improve outcomes for students? And it's literally called "How Do We Know?" So you can go to DUCY's "How Do We Know?" website, and you can look at the evidence-based programs that we've adopted as a district, and look at all of the research that's been done on why that is the right program or the right intervention to put in place in order for student outcomes to improve. And then the final piece of it is the crosswalk between those evidence-based practices and the "How Do We Know?" website and the actual Student Opportunity Act program categories, which is what DUCY has identified as the programs that should be implemented in order to connect to the disparity data and improve those outcomes. So, review. You've got the analysis of the disproportionate subgroup data. You're going to connect that to some kind of analysis of underlying causes for that disproportionality. Then we're going to identify evidence-based practices that it's been shown through research can impact positively that disproportionality, including what suggested metrics we look at to track our progress along the way. And then it's all aligned to the Student Opportunity Act program categories. And all of that makes up the plan, the three-year plan. Okay? Like, still unborn? Still there? Okay. So, the first place that we noticed disproportionality was in our low-income population in our elementary school. So specifically looking at ELA achievement in grades three through five. And the way that the Student Outcomes Comparison Tool shows us the data is by looking at how many students are in the meeting or exceeding category or achievement level on MCAS, and then breaks it out by subgroups. So 43.3% of all students are in the meeting or exceeding categories on ELA MCAS in grades three through five. Only 23% of our low-income population is in those categories.
I know, are we... I think we've halted. I know we now offer free lunch throughout the district via the state and federal funding. How are... Two questions. Sorry, I'm a little slow tonight. The first is, how are we collecting that data, and how confident are we in that data to determine the low-income subgroups in the community?
That is another great question for Nick Bernier.
For Nick Bernier.
Uh-huh. Yeah, he...
Fine, okay.
I can call a...
Phone a friend?
Phone a friend here?
Well, not for tonight. I'll make a note.
I know he has a great answer for you, though.
Nick has that answer.
Yeah. He has a really good answer for you.
It's just based on Sim data.
There you go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Your what data?
October 1st report.
Your Sims data?
Sims, that's what we do by October 1st.
It's Sim for Student Information Management Systems.
Okay.
Data recording in the district. That's due like three times a year. And that's what you get your enrollment numbers, your low-income, your subgroups, your demographic data, all that stuff.
And a lot of students are pre-certified for low-income, like, that designation because they're parts of programs.
Your household is enrolled in some other state program.
Exactly.
Great. I just was worried that maybe we were losing track of some of those families because we aren't doing the lunch forms.
Nick does a cross-check of it every year, and so I am confident because I'm confident in him that we are not.
I apologize for the aside. Thank you.
No, no, that's great. All right. So with this disproportionality, only 23% of low-income students are in the meeting or exceeding achievement levels on ELA. We're setting a target of 35% over... So in three years, we are hoping that our low-income students, 35% of them are making up the meeting or in the meeting and exceeding categories for achievement on MCAS. How are we going to do that? So last time I was here, I talked about MTSS, the Multi-Tierred System of Support. That's how we're going to do it. So this is our goal. It is research-based. You can go and read all of the research on it. And the specific things that we are looking at within the MTSS implementation to affect this particular data point is increased opportunity for common planning time for teachers and increased or improved professional development. So you may know just from the world that we've had some really major shifts in early literacy instruction and early math instruction over the past... Well, for reading, it's been decades. For math, I feel like it's been maybe a decade. And so with that comes a whole new professional development model. We've implemented PLCs, so teachers can really talk to each other about how they're providing this instruction. But we plan to continue that next year and increase how much time we're actually able to do it. So that's our first one.
Sorry. Well, that objective also, is that going to be aimed at every kid who's below expectations in MCAS, or just a low-income or subgroups?
Oh, great. So it's, yes, it's students who meet criteria for support on the... So I think the first one that you said, not the second one.
Based off of the data of the scoring?
Correct.
Every kid who falls below?
Yes. Yes. But what we're expecting is that, because so many of those students disproportionately are low-income, that it will help.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so the next one is the growth percentile in math in grades six to eight. So this is different from the last one. The last one was achievement on MCAS. This is growth over a year on MCAS. When you are measuring a growth percentile, what you're looking for is the number 50 approximately. 50 means you have made one year's worth of growth. So it's really great that our all-students percentile is over 50, and it's not great that our students with disabilities percentile is much less than 50. So they're not making even a year's worth of progress on MCAS. So because I know we can get there with our all-students, we've set that SOA three-year target at 51, so hoping to move that more towards the average of all students. How are we going to do that? I know. You're probably going to get tired of me saying MTSS over the next three years, so buckle up. We are going to expand our MTSS programming into our middle school. So right now, we really haven't implemented MTSS at the middle school at all. We've started to in the elementary. We are building up. And one of the ways that we're doing that is we are reconfiguring the scheduled instructional time during the middle school day to actually identify time that is for small... I'm sorry, small-group intervention. So we don't have that at the middle school right now. We don't have any intervention staff. We don't. Tier-two intervention staff. We don't have, you know, a time in the day like we do at the elementary that is dedicated to responding to student data. So being able to reconfigure our instructional time and really have some more targeted time for intervention at the middle school, I think is really going to help us. And then we are actually increasing staff, or we are proposing to increase staff at the middle school as well, and actually have an interventionist who can do things like run our student support team to make sure that students are getting the academic, social, emotional, and behavioral intervention at the right time when they need it. So it's really building up our middle school programming to have much more of the academic intervention eye on it. And then our last section is high school graduation and advanced coursework completion. And our subgroup that we chose for this one is also students with disabilities. And the first one that we looked at was graduation rate. So our all-student graduation rate is 88.4%, while our students with disabilities only graduate in four years at 66.7%. So we're looking at a three-year target to improve that to 80%. And then advanced coursework completion is a... It's just for 11th and 12th graders. And it's when 11th and 12th graders complete a course that the state has designated as an advanced course. Obviously, APs are in there, but a lot of other courses are too. So it's not just Advanced Placement. It's not just IB. It's a much more expansive view of what advanced coursework can look like. But it's specific to how many 11th and 12th graders are not only signing up for those courses, but are they completing them successfully? So, very good news that our all-students rate is 51.1%, although we want to make that higher too, just FYI. But what we really looked at was our students with disabilities rate. Only 7.7% of our 11th and 12th grade students with disabilities attempt and successfully complete advanced coursework. And so we're really looking to improve that. 20% may not seem like a very, you know, big goal, but I think it really is. I think in three years, to get more students believing that they can access those classes and then can successfully complete that is actually going to be quite a lot of work, so. So those are the specific places that we've chosen to focus on. Oh, I'm sorry. How are we going to do that? Ha, ha, ha. We are going to do that by strategic objective 2.3, reimagining the high school experience so that all students are engaged and prepared for post-secondary success. And to do that, we need to really think about pathways in our high school. How are students getting to the place where they feel like they can take advanced coursework when they're 11th and 12th grade? How are we setting them up for success in 9th and 10th grade? Examples, and I'm not attaching myself to any of these examples, but for example, many high schools implement a 9th-grade academy sort of model where you team your teachers around just the 9th grade, and you really like, you put up this little barrier of support for them to hold them while they transition from middle school to high school. That is one of the things that's been very successful in other places. In three years, that may be the sort of thing that we're trying to do in order to develop these additional pathways and get kids.
What does that mean, Julianne? So they don't generally, that the 9th grade... Because I know the 9th graders will take a variety of courses. So are they precluded in that model from, like, higher-level courses, or how is that?
No. No, it's more about, like, the adult structure around them and how adults are communicating about students and how they are trying to think, like, sharing information about students. They would share students more and teach them more curriculum with each other. So right now, we have a lot of, like, singleton classes. Like, maybe one teacher teaches all 9th grade English classes, let's say, right? So it's not a great model, because you want to have someone who's on your team, who's doing it with you. So a 9th-grade academy, like, pulls the adults together and creates much more collaboration and support for students.
So with the idea being that with more eyes, more adults seeing, more of them meeting them and knowing them, they'll be able to see their strengths? And, okay.
Beautiful. Yep.
Like many universities do, where there's like a freshman program.
Exactly. Yeah, okay. Right, there's just some support around that transition, which we know is a really tough transition for students. And if they, you know, start off in high school thinking, "This is too much. I can't do it," it's very unlikely that by 11th grade, they're going to feel like, "Yes, I can take these hard..." Like, "I can challenge myself. I can really get into it." So that's what we want to do, is like really build their confidence in those first couple of years, so they take those risks to take the more advanced coursework.
And no thought yet about... Well, never mind. Okay, great. Keep going.
Well, that's it. So SOA questions?
So I want to tie this back to the SOA. Like, so we have this plan, and we're using MCAS data to develop a plan that will allow us to get SOA funding?
So in order to have the funds, you have to do the plan.
Okay. And does DUCY require that we use MCAS data?
Yes. Yeah. That's the... So this... Whoops, where is it? This helpful, helpful tool is what they specifically say. Like, "Go to this. Look at where your disparities are. Choose three."
Sad face.
I mean, it's not a bad...
Totally neutral face. Yeah.
I have a piggyback question on that. Does it impact, like, the way that this plan gets laid out and our ideas, does that impact how much of SOA funding we get? Or like, it's whether or not... Okay.
It's, yeah, it's a change in the Chapter 70 formula. We have to submit a plan. Other than that, there's not a lot of connection between the funds and the plan, as far as I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
You guys, who makes the decision? I mean, these are great. These three things, great.
We did it as a leadership team. So we sat with the principals and us and Dr. Lively and, you know, all of our leadership team. And we went through this, and we looked at where the disparities were, and we were like, "This looks good. How about this?" Like, "This looks like it shouldn't be that bad. We should really work on that." So it was really the leaderships team. But then I sent it. I presented it to... But then I sent, or I sent it, I presented it to the Mountain View School Council. We talked a bit about it and I'll present it to the EHS School Council. And we'll also send the plan to the East Hampton Education Association. And I can't remember who else is on the stakeholder list other than you all.
If, if, if MCAS is, is voted out this year.
Well, as a graduation requirement.
So we'll still have.
Doesn't affect this, yeah.
Oh, that's good, got it, got it.
Yep.
I have a particular question for you. I think it was on slide 20. I had two questions. And maybe you said this, but do we, do you have an idea of why we're graduating so many fewer students with disabilities?
Yeah, so this is a four-year graduation rate.
Okay.
It goes up once you go to five-year.
I see, okay. That's, yeah, that's huge, okay.
We get a lot more students graduated by five-year, but it's worth it.
Dr. Lively isn't here, but there's a lot of questions I would ask about how some families may choose to stretch that timeline out and try to access services. I think, is it age 21 is the limit? 21. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of reasons that could be beneficial depending on your
So many.
I just assumed you meant overall, that's great, yeah. The other question I had for you, so this, that column is the completion rate for advanced coursework.
Yep.
Do you have a sense of how many in both categories of all students and students with disabilities actually do attempt those but are not successful? Like, is that wildly different or is it like about a percent attempted and about 8% are successful?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I would be more than happy to look. I know I can get that data, yes, yeah.
Just curious, like, if, whether they're just not trying them or if they're trying them and it's not working, like, I'm just.
It's a good question, yeah. I can look more into that, for sure. Thank you. That's good because then I can, when I go to EHS School Council, I bet they're going to ask that and I can already have that data for them. Thank you, Megan.
And it may help hone in, like, if there is a hand, a cluster of classes that are, there's regular attempts and a high rate of failure, maybe, you know.
That's a different strategy than if people just aren't even trying.
Correct.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Great.
Anyone else have a question?
Linda?
Thank you.
Thank you also much.
All right. I'm going to stop sharing. And that worked, great.
We do, so we'll need, so we need a vote. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act as presented by Julianne Levin tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act Plan as presented by Julianne.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Thank you very much.
Anything else, Superintendent Penanda?
No, I think it was Julianne did a great job with that, leading the discussion. And it was a really good opportunity to work together to look at the data. You know, it was attendance, the college and career readiness or the advanced courses. We had a lot of discussion about that. And that's actually like, how do we get kids to be aware, A, that the courses exist, right? And then for special ed kids, what do we need to give them so they can be successful in those classes? So, you know, do they need extra time for someone to work with them? Do they need after-school help? Like, the idea is to look and see, every kid should be able to take advanced classes. It's the support we give them that differs. And that's, you know, what comes into that conversation about increasing those numbers of kids to get into those courses. So this year, we're hoping to have AP, pre-calculus. At the high school now, that's a brand-new AP course that was available this year. And the kids that take pre-cal already take it, but now it's going to be called AP pre-cal. And they're going to be able to get, there's another group of kids now that are going to be able to have that opportunity. And that would also increase the accountability numbers for East Hampton High School.
That's great. One less course they'll have to take if they go to a four-year school. Anything else, or is that it for your update?
That's it for me.
Thank you so much. We are going to move on to Mr. Nick Burnier, our business director.
Director of Business Services.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Your FY24 Local Appropriation Report update. As of the publication of this business report, 69.61% of our appropriation has either been spent or encumbered. As I always do, I'm continuing to monitor the budget for areas to watch and transfers that may be needed, one of which is an action item on your agenda for later on this evening. Areas of particular concern are the same. It's utility bills, it's out-of-district tuition, expenses that are, you know, more or less out of our control. Some expenses currently in the general fund will be reclassified to grants or revolving funds as the year gets closer to its conclusion. That kind of, you know, thing I'll, I'll be looking at after the budget's done and, you know, when preparations for the year-end close begin. I've done a budget forecast to predict where we'll end up at the end of the year. I'll do this again in late April. I mean, I did the original one in, you know, during February vacation week and, you know, it's kind of early to be doing that. But my forecast did indicate that there would be a deficit at the end of the year, but the size of it will largely be dependent upon how much circuit breaker, extraordinary relief money comes in. I won't actually have that figure from DESI until probably early May. I can project, you know, based on the data that I have, but from what I, excuse me, can gather, the deficit at the end of the year won't be as large as my February forecast indicated. So that's some good news. The FY25 budget process, our finance subcommittee has met four times now regarding our FY25 proposed operating budget. As was reported last month, our proposed budget will be higher than normal due to various factors such as tuitions, transportation, utilities, and our ESER III COVID relief money depleting. We, as a leadership team and as a finance subcommittee, have put every effort forth to keep the FY25 budget as low as possible while still meeting the needs of our students. As you'll see in the presentation during the budget hearing in a couple of weeks, many of the pandemic-related needs are still, still there, even though we're, you know, four years to the day tomorrow, removed from when the, the world essentially shut down. The needs do linger. So my next step is to create the budget book, as well as my presentation for the school committee at the, for the budget hearing. And then we would anticipate the school committee would vote on it on the 26th of March. Good news in the summer food service program realm. Now that East Hampton Public Schools is a CEP district, both of our schools are eligible sites for summer food service program. You'll recall last summer, the meals were served at Millside Park, which, you know, was, it was a valuable service to the community. And I know that, you know, the families that went daily were, were pretty consistent. So it, you know, demonstrated that there was a need and, and the folks that did come were certainly grateful. But that type of site's not ideal. I mean, it's hot, you're subject to weather, there's mosquitoes, you're near a body of water. I mean, there's just a lot of, and you had to eat at the site. It's not grab-and-go due to the USDA regulations. So a lot of factors contributed to that, but with the schools being eligible sites, that's going to increase participation. The schools are more central, people know them, they can eat indoors. We're in the early stages of planning now. We will probably just do one of the sites because it, you know, it would require a lot to probably run two and the sites are very close to one another. So my food service director and I have had a couple of conversations. The next step would be to chat with our leadership team to kind of see what makes the most sense. But the application for that's not due till June anyway, so we have some time. So that's good news. We expect participation to be increased this summer just due to the fact that, you know, we'll be in schools instead of in, in a park. And lastly, my personnel report for the month of February. Not too much to report here in terms of hiring. Two substitutes were hired throughout the month. We had three separations, one substitute teacher, one paraeducator, and one lunch supervisor at Mountain View. No transfers. In our current vacancy list, the middle school librarian position is still vacant. Speech, our long-term speech-language pathologist substitute, I, at this point, I'm, I'm certain that won't be filled before the year ends. We do have a paraeducator position at Mountain View open, as well as two lunch supervisor positions. Are there any questions regarding either report? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the Policy Subcommittee update. Sam Hunter is the chair of the Policy Subcommittee. They are not able to attend tonight. Ben, do you feel comfortable kind of taking those ratings?
Sure, we, we, we met on the first, I think it was, and we, we updated, I think, five or five policies related to tech primarily. They were district security relating to tech, data and records retention, personal use of tech and access to digital resources.
These were template, correct?
Yeah.
That come directly from MASC?
Exactly right, yep. And that's sort of the, the primary work. But then we had a couple of discussions, you guys could fill me in, but, or fill, fill in the details here, but I think mostly we talked a little about cell phones, as I recall, and like, just kind of wanting to analyze what kinds of rules and regulations there are around cellphone use and maybe starting a conversation around whether or not it's worthwhile to consider restriction, more serious restrictions or not. But that's absolutely in the beginning stages. It's nothing formal, but other things, Linda, like, anything else in there?
No, I think you pretty much covered it. I mean, we had some side discussions about AI and.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Things that we're going to start.
Chit-chat. That's, yeah, that's about it.
Do you have a next meeting scheduled yet or?
Yeah, 19th, I think, March 19th.
March 19th.
Yep.
Do you have a time?
Six o'clock.
6:00 PM, so those are public meetings. So if you're interested in talking about AI or cellphones or tech use.
Please come.
Do you join?
It's actually pretty good, it's pretty good.
We're going to move on to the Finance Subcommittee update from the Chair, Megan Harvey.
That's me. I don't have much to add aside from what our Director of Business Services has already shared. We've met four times. The minutes from the first two meetings, February 12th and February 26th, are in the packet and as such will be public shortly. The minutes from the March 5th meeting are coming and I have not yet created the minutes from the meeting that just occurred an hour before our meeting, but I will soon. And so essentially, we have been working really hard on looking at the proposed fiscal year 25 budget. Nick deserves all the credit for that. He's crunched the numbers as many different ways as they can possibly be crunched. We have a challenging situation coming upon us, but I think we've been really clear as a committee and I think the leadership and from what I understand, you know, the community, we're all feeling really aligned on district values around what we feel is important and what we are prioritizing in our district. And so, you know, please come to that public hearing on March 26th. Thank you, almost at 5th.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, right here or right there on the Google Meet, where our Director of Business Services will present the budget we voted out of Subcommittee today. And we'll keep moving forward on level services for our kids.
Thank you so much. It's going to be your work, but we're going to move on to action items next. But Superintendent Penanda, do you want to say anything about the first two items? The first is voting East Hampton Public Schools as a school choice district and the second would be that, the school calendar for the coming school year? Or if you have anything to share?
Sure, just that it's, the state requires that it ought to be a school choice district that we have a vote of the school committee. So then if you don't vote school choice, then you can't take students in. So it's really important. If you vote that in tonight, there's also a survey that I have to complete right away to get out also to the state regarding school choice. And it's important, the school choice funding for this district actually helps us provide so many services for students. And it's a great district and you can see why people do want a school choice into it because it provides so many things for students, including very dedicated leaders as well as faculty. And I hear that from parents all the time when they come to meetings, how much they appreciate the teachers that work with their children and how supportive they are. So we need that vote tonight, hopefully. You'll vote yes to keep it a school choice district. And then the calendar draft, it's already gone to the union. The union did a survey on it and did approve it. And next year is kind of an interesting year because of where the holiday of Christmas falls and for the, how the vacation on the 23rd, how that works. So we, we had to get a discussion with the union because we're actually going to start one day earlier because we have that 23rd there where it wouldn't make sense for people to come back to school for that one day during that Christmas break. So this is the, every four-year change that we'd like to make and the union has approved that change.
Could you, I'm getting this question a lot, more importantly, and seeing it on Facebook where I don't like answering as a school committee member. As of today, assuming no further snow days, what is our last scheduled half-day of school at this point?
June 20th.
Get that? June 20th, which would be a half-day.
And we all have to remember that June 19th is a non-school day.
Right, and June, Juneteenth.
Yes.
Federal holiday.
Look back for a half-day.
Yeah, so June 20th, half-day, last official day of school.
Yes.
Unless we get a blizzard, which has been known to happen.
It has.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the East Hampton Public Schools as a school choice district?
And I will make a motion to approve East Hampton Public Schools as a school choice district.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Linda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to.
Thank you. Go.
Make a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 school calendar draft number two.
Second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to approve the special education budget transfer request of $50,000 from payroll account to medical therapeutic contracted services for Mountain View School K through five.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to approve the school payroll dated 2/22/2024 in the amount of
Second.
That was a tie.
We're going to say that with Ben? I don't know. Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Here, Ben.
You're next, you're next. We're doing a whole loop.
Motion passes?
There's more motions, don't worry, guys. Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 2/22/2024 in the amount of $379,397.15.
Oh my God.
Second.
Thank you, Eric. That was Eric? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 20th, 2024 work session.
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 20th, 2024 regular and executive session with a stipulation to withhold until matters are resolved, reviewed, and released by the Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 27th, 2024 executive session negotiations with a stipulation to withhold until matters are resolved, reviewed, and released by the Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 4th, 2024 executive session
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 4th, 2024 executive session negotiations with a stipulation to withhold until matters are resolved, reviewed, and released by the Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Okay. Our next meeting dates, we've said this three times tonight already, one more couldn't hurt, will be March 26th. That is our expected public he, hearing on the budget. There will be an opportunity for public speak and a really flashy slideshow, right? Yeah. So
Just flashy.
Moderately flashy slideshow. So that will be on the 26th. Then we have more meetings, April 9, April 23, May 14, May 28, and June 11. At this time, we are not going to adjourn. We are actually going to move into executive session, which will be closed in the rear conference room. And we will adjourn the meeting at the completion of executive session. We'll not come back into open session.
I think you have to read this.